Good morning, Sharon.
Good morning.
The audio sounds much better this time.
We're working on it.
Morning, Sharon.
Good morning. The audio sounds much better this time.
We're working on.
John, how are you?
Good.
And yourself?
Good morning.
Between themselves as to which theater first?
Uh huh.
And then how to go about it?
Uh huh.
And the Brits had whole different ideas on our side anyway.
Yeah.
And it's talking about Roosevelt trying to pull the whole thing together and get some of these
Want me to speak?
nutso ideas off the table.
Hello.
Pretty interesting.
Hello. Hello.
My mother-in-law got me a big biography of Jay Edgar. Started pretty interesting stuff.
Jay Edgar?
Yes.
Dorothy, how are you today? Glad you made it in.
And please. In front of a school, but it'll be closed once the main issue.
You know, Tressa is not coming today. This scene is free if you want to sit over here and get out of the drag.
Once they close.
Hey, John, good morning. It's Judith. Did y'all have that wedding yet?
June 3rd. I were thinking the idea.
Yeah. How's that going? Oh, no.
The invitation to do all my inspiration that the final one, the issue file proof, when you set this, you're done.
Yeah.
Of course, I'm worth paid for, right? And it's on, they came back, you know, and they were
Oh, no.
And like, maybe nobody noticed. So we had a few hours during the night of texting. I can't play the word.
All right, we don't need the theme music. We're good. Okay, great. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the March meeting of the St. Mary's County Library Board of Trustees. My name is Michael Dunn. I'm the president. And if we can go around and introduce ourselves, that would be great. Why don't we start with John and we'll go around and then Sharon, if you can introduce yourself.
John Walters, trustee.
John Johnston, vice president.
Dorothy Waters, trustee.
Judith Wynn, trustee.
Sharon, if you're there, can you introduce yourself?
Sharon Fitzsimmons, trustee.
All right. Thank you for logging in remotely. Our treasurer, Tressa Setlack, is absent today, but we have a quorum, so we can move forward. The first item on our agenda is to approve the February 2023 minutes. Any discussion or questions about those minutes?
I will move to adopt as presented.
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? Okay, motion passes. Next up, under the president's report, is approval of the monthly expense ledger for February to early March, the EALs. Does anyone have any questions or comments about these expenditures?
I'm a couple of quick questions. One was the fifth item on the front page for Tech Logic. Is that the self-checkout equipment? Are we renting that and does it involve like software license?
Yes, it does. Software licensing and well, that's the renewal is the software licensing plus we have the equipment in all three of our branches. Smurla did assist with some of the payments at the beginning, but we now pay for it annually.
All right. And just there's a few other items that was listed as programmer. What does that involve?
That's our our programs department. They will contract out with programmers to do different kinds of types of programming. I can look up each of these individually. If you'd like to know what program they did, but they will do different kinds of programming with people.
All right, but they're not writing code?
No.
May I ask, what is Askew and Askew? What service are they providing for us?
They are our accountant.
They provide quarterly updates. Every quarter they review our books and we also will upon occasion seek their services for clarification on different points as we are creating our budget.
Would it be inappropriate for them to also do the audit?
We go with whoever the county gets and typically at a discount because we're in with them.
Okay.
And I don't know that they do auditing. We'd have to look into it, but basically we sort of go with who the county chooses on the audit.
We've had some notification a few meetings back about the principals leaving the firm. Is there any update that we need to know or discussion that we need to have about them not being there?
Well, no, they've left the firm in good hands and I believe they've both retired, although they still check in with the with the business. I know Kathy Askew from Rotary and saw her just this past Thursday, for example, so they are no longer in charge, but I don't necessarily see that the firm is suffering in any way, and I'm sure that they would be displeased to know that it was. So we're monitoring what's going on with them. We've got good relations and a sort of a personal connection with somebody who's been doing our books for quite some time, so we're satisfied with their service.
All right. Can I ask about page three of the EALs at the top, U-line for a new chair for 483 bucks?
Lexi bought a new chair for the front desk. Our chairs get really warm and it's been several several years since they've bought new equipment. And so they have bought one new chair. They actually have requested more new chairs for the front desk. This is why our equipment isn't, our equipment budget line is not very high. One chair is a fourth of that budget.
Thank you.
Yes, if you've been up to Charlotte Hall or Lexington Park and looked behind the desk at some of the conditions of the chairs, it is pretty sad.
I asked about page one has a payment to Minnesota Life. Page three has a payment to Madison Life Insurance.
Minnesota Life is our life insurance and Madison Life is our long-term disability insurance.
Got a monthly payment?
Yes, it is. Full-time employees only.
Do we have anybody on long-term disability?
We don't have any claims at the moment for either. Well, we have one retiree for life insurance that's put in a claim because they passed away, but we have no other claims for long-term disability or life insurance.
I think we are ready to entertain a motion to approve the EALs.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? Okay. And let me note also, Sharon, if it's easier for you to just raise your hand instead of muting and unmuting, that works for us. And let me just say kudos to Belinda for being ready and able to rattle off all of these details when asked. We really appreciate your hard work and expertise. Okay, treasurer's report. Tressa is out today and we have moved to a quarterly report, so she will have a report for us in April. And so we can move on to the Smurla report from John.
Yes. Let's see, they elected officers. I think Ronald Croupy, if I think he's pronouncing his name correctly, was re-elected as president. New vice president is Suzanne Darby and new treasurer is Martha Graham. And the meeting included a board retreat. Among the items, name you probably familiar with Irene Padilla, the state library, gave a presentation about the agency. Discussed some of the funds in American Recovery Act in terms of mobile libraries across the state and also infrastructure planning for some of the counties. One item that came up is bylaw revisions that'd be included in April's agenda because of some legislation and I believe our packet today includes some of the legislation that affects. Let's see, and the lease contract was approved for Pitney Bones postage equipment. Let's see here, the retreat included Suzanne Haley was was doing a training on equity diversity inclusion, found it very useful and informative. And we also went over some of the financials for Smurla. Some of this stuff is new to me. Next, so hopefully next week we'll be meeting with Ashley Teagle. To dig over some of my responsibilities and also so I better understand the distinction in terms of responsibilities between the county libraries and Smurla.
Great. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments on John's report?
Not a question, but a comment. Ashley Teagle, the CEO of Smurla, reached out to the county directors and said that their trustees had enjoyed that training and wanted to know if training should be extended to all trustees of the counties. And the three directors have said, well, fine with us. So we'll see what might develop from that, but it would be possibly visiting with us with the training as opposed to everybody having to have a separate session. So we're just going to look into that kind of thing when we might have more time.
That's a great idea. Thank you, Michael. All right. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
And let's turn it over to Michael for the director's report.
Good morning, everybody. Michael Blackwell, director at St. Mary's County Library here. Just a reminder that 11 we have zoom in from Asset Strategy who manage our OPEB fund. Just an initial review of the portfolio and my understanding is a couple of suggestions about changes. So we'll hear from them. The first item then is our current budget review. If you take a look at your packet, we have that information in there. And basically things are with 70%, 71% of the year passed by in pretty good shape by and large. We have a few items that will require attention eventually. The water and sewer and gas expenses. Our telephone expenses in some instances are higher than we had budgeted for. So those accounts will probably ultimately go negative and we'll have to have you do an adjustment for us at some point. We still have not received the first quarter, anything but the first quarter bills for Leonard Town. So that's why those are so low and we'll just have to see where those are coming in. We think they're budgeted fairly well. Under IT contract services, you'll see that we do have a negative account. Basically, we had to get a new firewall. The other one was not going to be supported anymore and it's essential for the the safe operations of our network. And that was not an expected expense, so that's the reason for that. And we will ultimately have to find some other way to to think about, you know, how we'll cover that. We think that there'll be room in the other budget lines once we finally do an adjustment for that. Do you have any questions about any of the budget items?
That gas was propane?
Yes, natural gas.
And who we're using?
The county is the ones who do that and it is, I'm sorry, what?
SMO. Southern Maryland.
Southern Maryland.
Boy.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask on page two, at the bottom, the circulation and program expenses for the top line, the circulation collection, we've only spent 50% of that budget. Can I ask like what's going on there?
So there's a little bit of a delay between what they spend and what you see on this budget because they spend it through Smurla. And then they send me the bills once Smurla is approved of the purchase. And then I have to enter individual bills and Ingram and Midwest will send, often send me a bill for one or two items. And so I will often have 50 or more bills to enter individually into my QuickBooks account, so sometimes there's a delay.
And there's a difference there between encumbered, meaning we've ordered it and expended, meaning it has arrived and we've paid for it. So we're well ahead of where that suggestion or where that amount is. We've asked the collection crew to over encumber for the year. Meaning that there might be some things that we order this year that will arrive next fiscal year and we'll have to go back and and consider paying those then, but we're expecting that full amount to be spent.
Thank you. Just knowing how critical and what a gem that circulation collection is, it's good to know that all that money is being spent wisely.
Yeah, we will definitely go all the way through it. It just sometimes takes a little while and they do spend. They do start spending a bunch in May, April and May to make sure that they can can use up the entire budget.
Belinda really needs assistance in data entry. But there's no budget for that.
Is it cheaper to run these purchases through Smurla? Why do we do that?
It's the only way to do it because they do the processing for us. We do not have a processing department to prepare the materials once they arrive. And they also have the contracts with all three counties. So yes, that's the service they provide. We'd have to hire extra staff if we were going to try to take it on ourselves and it would be a duplicate expense with what Smurla is already doing.
I have a question about the firewall purchase. Typically, most IT has a lifespan of like three years. Did this, was this not planned in the previous to for replacement or was it something that I'm trying to make sure that we're thinking in the future about replacement IT and planning for it appropriately?
I guess I'd say that our issue is some lack of ready funds for IT. I would say that we recently did a lot of upgrades and used some friends' money to pay for that and we did just receive a friend's donation that I thought would have to go for our ebook and audiobook source Hoopla that it turns out we may not need just yet. So that might be something we'll do for that, but yes, this was not, I would say, expected and also that that they said we're not going to start supporting anymore. We need to make sure we're planning for that, yes.
On page five. Under your services and fine income, other income and donation funding. You have totals for those, some of those items in the percentage collected. The amounts don't show.
I'm sorry, what are you asking for?
For the percentage collective.
Of
Page five.
Of other income services and fines?
Yeah, services and fine income on the percentage collected column?
Yes. We have 80, we collected 80% of what we guessed that we would get.
No, I mean, for example, in your section on the services and fine income, under other income.
Oh, why does it say div zero? Because you can't divide by zero.
Yeah, we didn't have anything expected in that and we came up with $288, so it's just a question of the fact that as Belinda just says, you cannot divide zero by anything and have Excel tell you something because it doesn't exist as a figure. But that, that's why that that's why that div slash zero exclamation point is there.
And that other income is overages that might come out in our cash register and I believe our accountant moved something and I I apologize, I can't remember what it is off the top of my head into other income that we got a small amount from something that didn't fit anywhere else. And so our accountant put it there. So most of the time that's just overages from our test check cash registers. It's usually not that high for the whole year. So we can't guess what that's going to be because we hope that there's no overages. We hope we're always coming out even.
And while we're looking at that line, it's good that services is at 80% with only 71% of the year elapsed, but you'll notice that fines are down. And we can continue fines, expect fines to continue to decrease over the years. The by state law, people under the age of 18 are exempt from fines. As more and more people go digital, there are no fines. So at some point, I hope we'll get low enough there that we consider just going fine free. But if we're making large requests for funding, that's not the time yet.
Thanks, Michael.
Well, if there's no other questions, then moving on. One request made as an additional director duty for the, for this year was to update the manuals for the trustees. I have done that and our new trustees, at least the two I've been able to meet with have current manuals. What my plans for that are, are to rather than run off the policies and procedures, which I've done for our new trustees, every time we make a change, those printed forms are outdated. Online, our staff can look at current ones. So what I would like to do is put all of the policies and procedures and manuals online for you to view. And that way you'll have current ones and I'll give you links to where those will be. We're doing a major overhaul on the personnel manual right now. So it's going to be a little bit of time before we have that up there, but all the other information I can also put there and it's you know, our elected officials, it's your, it's your board bylaws, it's Maryland laws, although we've got that red book to look at, which is current now. So we will work on getting an online manual going for you and expect to see those, all those policies, procedures and things that we ask you to sort of vote on changes and an online version coming up.
When you do that, is it possible that you can show, let's say there's a paragraph about, I don't know, room rental and it's been changed? Can you annotate that it replaces an old paragraph on that subject? Or have it follow the old paragraph so we can see the impact?
Well, what what you'll be doing is you'll be approving any change on a monthly basis, so you'll have the changes there. I do not wish to annotate documents and have constant revisions to them. You'll see the current versions. But you will have an opportunity to see what the previous version was and to note any changes that way and vote on it.
Michael, can you give us an estimate of when this set of links or kind of when this folder online will be ready? I mean, is this something that we can expect by our April meeting? What kind of timeline are you looking at?
Well, we're going to have to have you review all the big changes on the one manual. So I will not say that the whole thing's going to be in place by then. Let's say probably June is likely for the complete set. Because we still have to have some changes for the one manual and you'll be having to approve those changes before we want to post them.
Okay.
It seems that it might be easier to review if they were posted. And if you're using Microsoft Word and tracking your changes, it will automatically annotate changes for you. Then when we go in as a group and we review them, we just click accept and it'll, it'll delete old text and replace it with new text.
Those are going to be in PDF and not Microsoft Word?
Are you publishing directly to Microsoft Word or are you working in?
No, we, we work in, we work in Word, but then the versions that we have people look at are in PDF so that changes cannot be made to them.
I do think things could get messy with all of us having track change edit access and so I think PDFs are the way to go. And I appreciate that we are going to be modifying policies on an incremental month-by-month basis as needed as we have been. But it would be good to just make sure we have a timeline to get that orientation manual up and running, even as we know it's a work in progress. So we'll look, we'll look for that by June.
All right, the state library released a sort of a overview of the different bills that are in front of legislation right now. And I've reviewed several of those with you already, but just a quick overview, the State Library Resource Center funding, the State Library does quite a few things for individual Maryland libraries. It has databases, for example, it has subject experts. And we occasionally rely on them for information. And so the first And we occasionally rely on them for information. And so the first one is just a small increase. For the State Library Resource Center, which is located up in Pratt. The second one doesn't really affect us directly. It's how Smurla's board is constituted. That's the regional resource center's governance requirements. And it looks right now the way that that this will pass. And that the current Smurla board will be able to go on for a while, but ultimately. Will be looking at having, rather than someone who's a trustee with one of the county boards, one of the Smurla members from each county being an at large.
Michael.
Yes.
Question on that first one, please. The Library Resource Center. And we see that it is a certain dollar amount per state resident. Where are they taking the snapshot to get the data for the headcount?
I don't understand your question, I'm sorry.
Well, if it's per state resident. What's the snapshot for how many residents are in the state of Maryland?
I think they use the census data.
Oh, yeah, they they use census, yeah. And just a reminder that. These formulas are not strictly speaking per capita. That's the basis, but there's fourteen. Factors in that, including, and again, I've said this before, I have no idea why railroad miles in a county. Why does that get factored into our library budgets? But it does. So it's not exactly going to be, if you would look at the funding they have and divided it by the number of residents in the most recent. Census, that that would be. A dollar eighty five per person, as it were, but you see just small increases for that. The third one is collective bargaining. I don't know if you looked at the Southern Maryland News that came out in print form on Friday. There was a letter from somebody up in Baltimore about. This particular bill. So the backstory on this is that. Individual counties. Were coming forward, I didn't, not necessarily the libraries, but but representatives from those counties. Were coming forward for individual counties saying, well, we want a bill that will guide unionization. For our county library and the committee basically got tired of having these separate things come up and said, all right. Bring us something back for the whole state. And this is not pro-union, this is not pro-management, this is just a. Legislation that will guide how unionization would take place. And among other things, it is being. Amended to take out direct appeals to county commissioners and have funding. We'll we'll call them negotiations, go directly to the to the board first, to you before the county commissioners. There would not be strikes allowed, for example. And we can show you the entire legislation once all the amendments are in place. There, if unionization were to happen, collective bargaining would happen in St. Mary's County, there would be some additional expenses for us. I have heard no move that way and will say nothing more because as management, one has to be very careful about what one says about possible collective bargaining. But I have worked with collective bargaining before in previous jobs and don't see that this is a particular concern for us right now.
Is Maryland a right to work state?
Uh, no. We would have to, if a unionization effort were to come along. Make sure that our employees and as in in management, you can do this. There are certain things you can and can't do. For example. Union. People, representatives cannot talk to our employees while they're on the clock. But they can talk to them while they're on break if our employees want them to, otherwise they can just say, go away. So there's, you know, we can post notices in our bathrooms and our staff rooms about the disadvantages of unions. There's all kinds of things you can get into here. As I say, I'm not really thinking that this is going to be of major importance for St. Mary's County. But you could look to see a couple of the systems up around Washington DC and Baltimore and Annapolis. Probably unionized in this upcoming year. The next one is capital funding for ENAC Pratt Free Library. That's the Baltimore County, a Baltimore city system. And you see that they have quite a few. Things they'd really like to see done and sort of asking for some money from the state capital funds to help with that. The one that would affect us is SB five oh one Aging Infrastructure Capital Improvement Program. Currently, Maryland libraries have seven point five million dollars a year up in competitive grants. And for example, one point eight million dollars, I'm sorry, one point six million dollars helped fund the Leonard Town Library from that fund. This would add about forty million dollars a year. And I don't know if this is going to pass or not. It would be nice if it did. We currently have three point five million dollars earmarked by our county for. Both Lexington Park and Charlotte Hall renovations. Well, that will cover the HVA systems which are due in both locations. If we had an additional forty million dollars, we could certainly ask for a match and we would be looking at a match, but possibly still more. To be able to do some serious work, which both locations really need. And those were addressed in our facilities master plan. So I'm, I I don't know if this is going to pass or not, but it would be helpful to us if it did. Just because there might be a lot more money for things like changing the layout at Charlotte Hall to unify the staff areas. Expand the children's area. Here, we and we reviewed some of the new board members. I'd had seen that quite a few things for Lexington Park to consider. So. We we'll hope that that passes.
Michael, can I ask a clarification on how you phrase something? Is that three and a half million each for those two places?
No, it's total.
Covers both of them in one way or another.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have asked that amount to be increased and said, you know, if all you want to do is replace the HVA systems, that will, that might do it. But if we wanted to do some real work to especially Charlotte Hall and kind of make it more like a twenty first century library, we're going to need more money than that. We will apply from the state, even at seven point five million, I think we can get at least one billion from the state. In fiscal year twenty eight. That's our plan anyway. SB four eight forty six circulation records. That's got just some minor changes that clarifies how we share library records, which is basically not at all. They're considered private and they've just added. Added a word or two, but there's really not much of a change there. SB three hundred HB two forty three, the Baltimore City Young Readers Program is actually very exciting. It would require matches. But the Dolly Parton Imagination Library is already doing some work in Maryland with some counties who have matches. And this would make some funding available that we would have to find a match for. Maybe we could get a Rotary Club or. Or something like that to to match a grant and it gives free books. To children. Now, if we want to do our whole county, it would be way more money than we could possibly afford. But we might be able to do, for example, Title One schools. Of which there are four and for about twenty thousand dollars a year, we think, then every child aged birth through age four would get a free book each month. So I'm hopeful that this will happen and there's a number of counties that are already participating in that. We don't have the funding match, so we haven't been, but. If more money were to come from the state, we would look to find a match.
Given the way libraries and librarians are pretty much under the gun across the country right now. If we had this program down here. How would you handle what the choices are? Because there seems to be a lot of suspicion out there about what little kids get to read.
Well, the the books are actually chosen by the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Foundation. And I don't think you're going to find anything that's particularly controversial there. It really is just basic readers.
Run, Jane, run.
You know, I I suppose if somebody, you know, anybody can object to something. That's the whole point of libraries is that we have something that offends everybody. Yes.
Locally also, Charles County actually already has this program in place, so we could also talk to them about how it's going. They've had it for maybe two years, maybe slightly longer than that.
But but any vibes coming out of there that there have been?
I've only heard wonderful things that it's going really, really well and that he participants appreciate it hugely. It's making a huge difference in their lives.
There's a a number of county libraries on the Eastern Shore that have also already been participating. If anything, I would say that that is probably one of the more conservative areas of Maryland. And once again, all they're hearing are are praise and thanks.
Okay.
I don't think that, although it's always good and I I appreciate you raising this point, it's always good to be careful. There is organized, they're mostly astroturf, they're not really grassroots efforts to. Control library collections and library programming happening across the country. Many states have bills, there's even one that would criminalize. Some library activity. So I think it's wise to keep that in mind, but we don't think that that's kind of what. This would would lead to.
When we lived in New York with my youngest kid, we actually received books through this program because of our zip code. And they were incredible. The books were so warm and empathetic and culturally rich and had great guidance for parents on how to. Like engage with their kids around them. It it's an incredible program. And I would love for some benefactor in our community to perhaps participate with that twenty thousand dollars because I can think of things that can add more.
We looked into it a few years ago and it is also quite a bit of work for staff. So something to consider.
Yeah, you know, this is not something we take on lightly, but if there were money there, we would, we would certainly look at trying and. The issue is, since we couldn't do the entire county, we couldn't afford to do the entire county. Is it a fair? A a fair ask to provide for just some of the county? And I I think that possibly the Title One schools where there's less likely to be. The wherewithal to fund books at home would be a possible target for us, but we'd have to make that decision at that time.
You mentioned that Charles County does this. Is Charles County supplying for the whole county or just their Title One schools?
I'm not sure. I do think it is somehow limited. I'm not sure if it's by school or if it's kind of by signing up through an application. But I could find out more about their process.
HB twelve forty six, the county public libraries overdue librarians for minors. This just got a couple of wording changes in it. That's already in effect and it's not changing the law itself. And the same is true for SB two oh five Education Libraries Funding. The the those amounts are actually already approved. And you'll see that we are due increases through fiscal year twenty twenty six and actually twenty twenty seven. And those amounts. Are are nice, but we're looking at getting an increase from the state for next fiscal year, roughly thirty thousand dollars. It's twenty nine thousand and some. And so we will hope to be able to get that sort of increase from the state in the upcoming years. So that's kind of what's going on. I've had the most questions about from our very selected officials about the collective bargaining. And and again, that looks very likely to pass. It has almost a veto proof support in the House and we'll see what happens in the Senate. But I I I think that will end up becoming law, but again, I don't know that it's going to have any immediate direct effects for St. Mary's County. Moving right along, we thank you for the. St. Mary's County Arts Council, who is. Going to be giving us some grant money to upgrade the gallery systems. So if you go out here into Lexington Park Library, you'll see the gallery area. And these will simply allow us to be able to hang art better there. And they're also going to provide some for Leonard Town. So they came forward and asked, you know, would we work with them on that? And we said, yeah, sure we will. So they've approved that expenditure. We've also been approached by the Friends of St. Clement's Bay, who was the kind of the umbrella organization that was. Working with several others to put in the front yard project in front of the Leonard Town Library. And they are applying for a fifty thousand dollar public art grant to put some public art in that project, in that garden area. And we are working with the county to make sure that there's approval for doing that. And we're deciding right now whether the library will apply or whether the Friends of the St. Clement's Bay will apply for that grant. But there's. There's money from a Maryland entity saying, we've extended our grant, won't won't you please apply? So we're going to try to take advantage of that and we've contracted with a local artist. If you go into Leonard Town right in front of the. Town offices, there's this really colorful bench. And she's the one who did that and we've examined her art and we've sort of talked with her about some possible ideas for what that public art would look like. So. Moving forward and see if we can get that grant.
So that's a, that's to be a commissioned piece.
Yes.
Thanks to Amy Dickinson for getting that art gallery grant. She really worked with the Arts Council on that.
Kudos to you, Amy. Thank you.
Okay, we're not at eleven yet, so let's move on into some action items. The first one is a fund balance distribution and OPEB contribution. You asked us for the money that has gone into us directly from the library. Various funds for the OPEB and you see the OPEB account funding for you there. And this is a record of the money that we've put in. Historically, what we've done to put in that money is looked at the end of the fiscal year numbers. And the audit and said, okay, we came up with a. Sort of greater amount, we had a fund balance at the end of the year. And put all or some of that fund balance in. So the years that you see missing are years when we did not have a positive result at the end of the year, when we were in the hole for the year. Those are the amounts that we've put in. You see that there is one for this fiscal year. That's because we closed out that one small account that had been created back in twenty thirteen. It really didn't seem to have any purpose other than it was. For future OPEB development and we did close that with your agreement and that money went into the OPEB. So that's the amounts you asked last month for what we've put in and then the account is. At about one point two million right now. That has just been growth over the years. It was at one point at one point four million. Unfortunately, the stock exchange has taken a bit of a bath here. So that kind of brings us to.
Ask a question about that.
Sure.
So. When you say the library put in. Did we get a refund on our healthcare premiums this year?
We did. And I will tell you all about that right now. So if you look at. The. Sheet. That. Says profit and loss twenty twenty one through June of twenty twenty two. You'll see that for last year, which is what I would like you to base this on, we had a net income of. It says eighty nine, but what we're looking, and this incidentally has been overseen by our accountants, asking and asking. So. This is what we think the fund balance was for last year, which I'd like you to consider basing this on. But there'll be another figure to talk about in a second. We think because there's some grant money that's listed here, that's still encumbered. About ten thousand dollars that we're looking at about seventy eight to eighty being. about ten thousand dollars, that we're looking at about seventy-eight to eighty being what we sort of have as a fund balance. But if you look at another sheet that says request for budget amendment on it, you'll see that we're asking for fifty thousand dollars for the mobile library, thirty-two thousand for the collection, twelve thousand for the vehicle ramp, and six thousand for some tech and wireless equipment in it. That lists our current account fund balance at four hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. That's the money we've got sitting there, as it were. Now, sixty-two thousand of that is encumbered. That's money we've said we're going to need to balance this year's budget. So we don't really have four hundred and eighty-eight thousand sitting there. I mean, it's there, but are we going to have to dip into that fund balance to balance the budget this year? That was our expectation. That's the how we've got the budget set up. So there's probably, assuming that we have to dip into the fund balance just for our regular operating expenses, probably around, call it four hundred and what, twenty there as a fund balance. So we did get about forty thousand dollars in a amount back that we didn't spend for, you know, we were expected to spend, and we didn't spend last year, so we got forty-five thousand back. So your sort of um, decision at this point is knowing that we were already asking for fifty thousand, and we're probably going to have to have more come out of fund balance for the mobile library to finish the project. Whether you want to put anything into the OPEB or not, knowing that Sue's Bank was just sort of merged yesterday, and there's all kinds of financial turmoil right now. Um, I wouldn't frankly recommend us putting a whole lot into the OPEB as an expense when we've got these mobile library expenses coming up, but that is your decision to make. So how much of, we're going to say if our the forty-five we're planning on on putting towards the fund balance, and incidentally, it is included in that fund balance amount that you see listed there for eighty-eight already. What we told the county we'd be doing with that is using it to offset healthcare increases next year, and healthcare costs are expected to go up two point five percent, although we did not ask for that in our budget. Unlike, say, the school, which asked for a ten percent increase. We asked for one point three million. We didn't identify that as a specific figure. So um, you could put some into the OPEB. I uh, my recommendation would be to hang on to it and use it for the mobile library rather than invest in stocks right now.
I'm having a little trouble following the bouncing ball across these documents.
Okay, there's four hundred and eighty-eight thousand sitting there, as it were. That includes forty-five thousand, forty-five thousand that we've got back from the county. It also includes the sixty-two thousand that we've said we might need to balance our operating budget for this year. So I would not I'm sorry, what?
Roughly a hundred between those two items.
About that, yeah. So we're probably looking at three eighty-eight roughly being our actual sort of budget. We're asking for additional fifty for the mobile library, and we're going to need much more than that to finish that mobile library project off.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have to go back to the basics. Um, what is our fund balance prior year funds?
Fund balance is just the amount that's sitting in our account that
Is not obligated?
Yeah.
Or encumbered.
I- if you think of it as what's in your checking account, that's pretty much what it's what it is.
What happens to our balance at the end of year if we have excess? Are we allowed to carry it over to next fiscal year?
No, it goes into this fund balance. So if we have extra, it goes into this fund balance. So when you look at that profit and loss statement, the eighty-nine thousand dollars minus nine thousand that was already encumbered for the mobile library grant and a cou- couple thousand dollars for another grant that was encumbered goes into the fund balance. So anything that we have left over or that we ma- have a net income of goes into that fund balance, we start over the following fiscal year. We can pull from the fund balance, but we put that into our budget. So if you'll see on page five of our budget, you can see where we've chosen um, use of fund balance for sixty-two thousand dollars this year to make our budget balance. So we expect to pull sixty-two thousand dollars from this fund balance into our budget this year.
Okay, so it is prior year funds?
It is prior year funds.
It's
Do keep our prior year funds?
We do keep
Yeah.
All goes into this
It it goes into, it goes into this account, yes.
Separate account.
Yes.
Yes.
So we choose whether to spend it or not?
Yes.
Yes, mo-
For rainy day?
Most of the time
You could call it, you can call it a rainy day fund.
Or you we could burn the entire balance if it's still here.
Yes. Most of the time, we are pulling some money from the fund balance to balance our budget every year. This year, in addition to the sixty-two thousand dollars we're looking at, already pulling out of that four hundred and eighty, we also need funds for the mobile library, at least fifty thousand currently.
So that brings us down to three seventy-six, right?
Yes.
Eighty-eight minus sixty-two. So so if we're looking at we need fifty more for the mobile library right now, but you're saying we're going to need more than that.
We're going to need another hundred to finish the project.
Another hundred for the mobile library?
Yes, in addition to that fifty.
Yes.
Um, and that's all due to the cost increases over built up over the past year. Unfortunately, it was not delivered on time. And so the cost has gone from about three hundred seven thousand total to four hundred, over four hundred for the project, and that's not including the collection.
Okay, so so the fifty on here is thirty-two for the collection, twelve for the van wrap, and six.
Right.
And then another fifty?
Probably more like another hundred.
What would that be?
That's for the vehicle itself.
We haven't paid for the vehicle yet, totally.
We have not, we we put two hundred and forty about two hundred and forty-one thousand has been paid for from the two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. And then there's another nine thousand in the grant that we need to make sure is spent, but we've included all that in the amounts we gave you last month.
So the additional hundred will be to the vendor who's selling us the van.
It's
All said and done, here's the keys, drive it away.
Exactly, yes. That's tech ops on the Eastern Shore.
But not putting books in it.
Well, the books are are already being paid for. You see, we've already got the collection, and that's this amount that you're paying, right? That we're looking at right now. It will have the books in it. It will not have the books in it up there. It's going to have to come down here. We'll have the books added to it.
From a financial standpoint.
Well, the collection is included in that fifty.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Right, so the budget amendment that's in front of you today is for the supplies that we are currently purchasing at the moment, because we do have to dip into our fund balance over and above what we budgeted for this year. So that's the fifty thousand. We know we're going to have to put some tech in there that isn't in there. We know we still are we just finalized those circulations, and I believe on the back of your sheet uh, of that, of that um budget request, that budget amendment, you'll see the collection costs. I added that to it. They just finished that up. That was Sandy and Rosa and Karen and our our whole acquisitions team putting that together. And they have come up with that thirty-one thousand dollar number. So that's the collections that we have just finished allocating, and and we're about to place that order, so we need those funds. We also need the funds for the tech, and we're going to ha- and Laura and Sandy are working on the wrap for the van.
That's really helpful. So I think right now we have a couple of questions in front of us. One is about this budget amendment for fifty K. And then there's another question about if we want to make an OPEB contribution, correct?
I would say that in addition to that, there is future expenses for the mobile library to consider when you make that decision.
That, and that's that hundred K?
Yes.
Okay. So with all those numbers, the four eighty-eight drops down to two seventy-six once we take out the hundred K and the fifty K and the sixty-two K.
Yes, approximately, yes. And but we haven't asked for that hundred thousand yet. We're waiting for that final bill, and that's when we would come back with another budget amendment to request more funds from the fund.
We appreciate this sneak preview.
Yeah, and if, honestly, if that doesn't come until the next fiscal year, although we don't, we anticipate it this fiscal year, then I can put it into the budget as more use of the fund balance, and it would be there, but it would just be a larger use of the fund balance. Instead of, I think I've budgeted forty-something thousand for next year, and of course, that's without having a budget yet. We won't know until tomorrow. Um, it would be a hundred and forty thousand we would be requesting from the fund balance. But yes, it does drop us approximately from four eighty-eight currently to somewhere around two eighty-eight.
Sharon has a question. I do, so I remember in January, we talked about the mobile library was running low because we hadn't had a lot of things. We hadn't had to staff it fully. Um, I know you hired some people who weren't completely um, doing that, the the uh, fuel, things like that. So has that been figured into this balance? Is that already used up for this?
Yes, we have, we are using it. It is not completely used. It is on the budget.
Yeah, you did a budget transfer last month of some of the fuel costs to programming. Um, so that money, the what was allocated for the mobile library, there's still some left, but it's not a whole heck of a lot.
Right, and the the rest of the fuel budget will be used because Sandy and Rosa, our mobile librarians, are using our current van as a mobile library at the moment and visiting multiple people across the county daily. They are out there all day, every day, and so the lo- regular mobile li- uh, regular library van is being used more than it has been in the last two years, so what's left of that fuel cost will go to that. And then there's um, five thousand dollars of supply money that will also be used for other things that are needed in the actual library itself.
Well, eleven o'clock is approaching. Um, for the sake of time, can we look at the request for budget amendment and have you consider that?
Uh, oh, anyone want to move that we approve this request for a budget amendment for the for the fifty thousand? Some moved. All in favor?
I
We have a discussion.
Okay, let's rewind the tape a little bit. John?
This seems to be developing into some kind of a black hole. It worries me a little bit. Uh, I know these are things that we think we have to have for the thing to work, but every time we turn around, this mobile library gets more and more expensive. And I I'm not saying I'm going to vote against this, but I think we all need to know which way this train is running before we wind up in a bind.
Well, we've given you all the figures that we know. I don't think there's any more expected at this point. Um, yes, it's more expensive than we had anticipated. Um, we asked for a three hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. We got two fifty. Um, at the time, we contracted for the vehicle. Um, that with an additional fifty thousand that um, we're going to get um, from the state capital fund, thanks to Brian Crosby. Um, we would have been able to get the vehicle. Um, fortunately, things have escalated since then, and um, but I think you have all the numbers at this point.
Have we bought the rap?
Not yet. We haven't yet.
It's in that budget amendment request. They are in the process of um, looking at different companies, but we do have approximations of how much it will cost. We have not actually bought it, but we are looking into it.
So the question then is, would it be fatal to our efforts to get the mobile library on the road if we struck twelve thousand dollars out of this amendment?
Why would you want a vehicle without a rap?
Why do we need to gussy it up?
It's not gussied up. It simply has our logo. It's really not particularly gussy, but it's also a way that the library is using to um, market itself.
Um, are you talking about a rap for the entire vehicle? It's got some graphic?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, the alternative would be to put the county library seal on the doors on all four sides, the typical county vehicles. Saying that's an option. I understand what John's saying is to put those county uh, symbol, you see the county public works vehicles, the county health department has those kind of things. They're not rapid vehicle. I I kinda
I'm just saying, de-lamorize it. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, it just seems like every month there's more expense to this. I I I love the idea of it, but um, at what point do we say enough? We're not putting any more money into this as a as a board? Is there a dollar we're going to say, put up the more money in this? We are accountable for such dollars. We want it, the story, you know, we spent whatever hundreds of thousands of dollars. Are we comfortable with that, saying this was a good investment of our money? I do think John had an interesting idea last month about using the current collection to staff the vehicle. I know that's not ideal, but we're looking at not getting what we asked for for next year, even close to it. And we, if this is the guns versus butters, what are we going to buy? Are we going to go for we had a series to talk about compensation for employee, library employees. And we either decide how determined we are, committed we are to seeing a decent living wage increase.
You cannot, you you, but you 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 can't use the fund balance.
That's not true to finish.
At the board, I could see where this is going. We're, if we commit to rap and books and then tell the library employees, sorry, you're getting a one percent pay increase next year, that's all the money we have. It's uh, I don't know, I'm just thinking of the board, we decide we are our priority.
You cannot use the fund balance for staff money.
So I think that, you know, this lo- mobile library represents a lot of different pools of money that have been gathered from many different sources. This is a major initiative that the library and the board have committed to. I I can't think of many big projects like this that launch without cost overruns or the kind of delays we're seeing. And, you know, my perspective is that if we're going to do it, let's do it right. And B, I think we need to be careful about sort of how we as a board want to decide and think about managing library resources, right? I think it's one thing for us to say, okay, no rap. It's another for us to say, come back with a lower number. But I think that this is something that we've committed to, and, you know, to a degree, we're over a barrel. I think we got to get this mobile library on the road, and I think we need to do it the right way. Um, but I appreciate that we have a lot of different competing interests. I think the question on the table right now is about this fifty thousand dollar budget amendment. Look, did you want to jump in over here, Laura?
Um, with the rap, I mean, it is something that we don't have to do. It will essentially look like a moving truck without a rap. Um, so that is something we can do, but it will significantly decrease its visibility on the road and just kind of that's awe factor of it, but it is something that if you wanted to move it into another fiscal year, we always can do that. Um, I do think it's a really good opportunity for us to get a lot of visibility in the community and for it to be a really great um, piece that people get excited when they see it. Um, it will just be white. That's what it will look like. It's a great big, huge, white moving truck. Um, but it will function. The rap is not about functionality. It's about um, kind of excitement in the community.
And it won't be totally anonymous, will it?
Yeah, I mean, we could just put the logo on it. I mean, that is something you can just buy like a decal that you could, would be considerably less expensive. Um, the impact would be decreased, but it is an option. Um, but like personally, I I do think that it will have a huge impact if we could do the rap, but I also see that it is incredibly expensive. So I can see um, where you guys are coming from.
Well, I'd like to driver rolls, but I'm in a Hyundai.
The truck is being delivered in June, is that correct?
We're expecting late May or early June, yes.
Okay, and the fiscal year budget rolls over in August?
July first.
No, it's 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 a July one through June thirtieth year. Um, at this point, we have the, I I believe we've got Asset Strategy online.
Well, let's let's finish this conversation first.
Great, so so what I'm saying is, this doesn't have to be part of this fiscal year's budget, because the truck won't even really be delivered for wrapping. And it would at most be, if we pushed it to the next fiscal year, it would be at most on the road unwrapped for like two or three months.
Yeah, but but we'd still have to take money from the fund balance next fiscal year. It's not in the budget. You can take, you can take the money now and have the van look good to start with, or you can, you can put it off, but you're still, if you're going to spend the money, you're going to have to use it as a fund balance.
And and that's the key. If we're going to spend the money, that's really what And and that's the key. If we're going to spend the money, that's really what it comes down to.
I do feel a little um today, I feel a little pressed decision. Is something we need to vote on today?
We're buying the collection at least that much, yes.
Okay, can we go back to the question? How terrible would it be to to outfit that van with current collection?
We've already ordered it. And what were you going to do with the rest of the library collection? Just can put old books in there? This is specialized for the needs of the mobile library.
Well, why are old books okay for library patrons that come to the library, but not for people that go to the mobile library?
We get new books. We get new books for the library as well. I I just don't think what you're gonna, you're gonna use discards for it. I don't think so.
So I think, okay, let, can we take a step back? I think it'd be really helpful if our library folks in the room could help explain why a mobile library needs a new collection rather than just taking parts of the existing collection.
We're constantly buying our collection. So every month we're buying new books. If we were to use that budget in order to purchase for the mobile library, it just simply stretches the budget a lot more. So we're buying for four locations instead of three with the current budget. So if it just means less copies for, say, Leonard Town, um, which then puts people longer on the waiting list for those new items.
We're also buying more Spanish and large print for this particular collection than we have necessarily buying out the library as a whole, just because of the target markets for it.
That part I get, but I can't believe we couldn't call enough books to sustain a a mobile library, especially until we get ourselves more fiscally sound with regard to income.
There is also, if we were pulling from the current collection, there would be processing costs because you have to change the location tags on all of the materials. And we do actually really need that Spanish collection because we don't have a very large Spanish collection right now.
And you'd also just be taking away from our current customers. It will be some strain next year to be ordering with the same materials budget for four locations. But the mobile library won't need a lot. And ultimately, it may be able to have some reserves come in filled by other locations, but I I still think you want to have a decent collection targeted for its specialized audience on day one.
Also, this is not something new. Uh, all of the mobile libraries, even in our tri-county area, have their own collection. So if you went into our Polaris account, you would see like there is a collection set uh for Charles County's mobile library and Calvert County's mobile library. They're separate and you can't uh reserve those books uh as a regular library employee because they're on that mobile library. So it is a separate library circulation. It's a separate group of people that we use those for.
Essentially, it's a fourth branch. You need to think of it as a fourth branch.
And that collection has already been ordered, right?
Yes.
Okay, Sharon?
I think so. I'm just, I'm just gonna sum up here really quickly. I think that our hesitation is not so much in that we we feel we want, we want this to be successful. But we're kind of wondering, especially those of us who are coming in late, why this wasn't planned for as part of the budget for this year? Because we should have known from the beginning that the library, the mobile library needed to be stocked. So to have this be an overage seems really odd because it should have been part of the plan.
When we did the budget last year, we were expecting the mobile library to be delivered last July, and there was no idea what the cost overruns would be. So uh, I would say that kind of blew a hole in our budgeting um in terms of this year's amounts.
Well, we we've got kind of a motion on the floor. Uh, procedurally, may I suggest an amendment? We vote on the amendment and then we vote on the motion.
What is the amendment?
I'm looking at the van wrap, twelve thousand dollars. I want to take that down to two thousand dollars. And we'll consider the glamour factor in the future.
I I would be okay with six thousand, and I'm thinking. Like not the whole view, but something a little, I I mean, I I know exactly what you're talking about.
I think you're nickel and diming this. What's six thousand dollars compared to the whole? What's six hundred dollars compared to our whole budget when you've got four hundred eighty eight there?
One thing that we could do for the rap, since that's a big concern, is Sandy and I can bring you some pictures next meeting of what it would look like if we did different levels of rap. We both feel pretty strongly that it's worth the investment to wrap the entire vehicle at one time. But I am perfectly willing to bring you pictures of what it looks like if we only wrap the back of the truck, if we wrap, you know, just like a little decal. Right. There are options. Um, when we looked at it, it just looks very, in our opinion, it looks very unfinished. It looks very much like a utility truck versus like a really welcoming fourth branch. Um, but we have pictures. We've done a lot of research and we've looked at it. So we could do that next meeting if that's something that is of big concern.
I I am concerned about our focus on the rap. We're looking at twelve thousand dollars out of a much bigger financial picture. I don't think it's a good use of our time as a board to negotiate between here and there on how much of a rap the van gets. I think that the services the van provides are really important as well as the narrative publicly that people see and hear and know about it. Um, and so I think that I I have concerns about us really zeroing in and to a degree nickel and diming what the rap is gonna look like. I don't think that's a great use of our efforts here.
Well, I I would agree with that, but we still then have a bigger picture, which is the issue of the OPEB funding and a balance of roughly two seventy six to two eighty eight with which to do that. I think it's all part of a bigger picture, and that is, are we paying attention to whether or not we can have champagne taste on an almost beer budget?
This is a big project, and this is the proposal we're putting before you. I um frankly think that um this is something the whole county is looking forward to, and I'll tell you the details about the ribbon cutting later. We have a number of uh delegates who will be speaking already lined up. We're going to have trucks there. It's going to be a big deal. And frankly, if I think you drive a plain looking van up, you're not gonna get a lot of excitement going about it. Twelve thousand dollars in comparison to the whole is very little money. This is the proposal we put before you. We have people from Asset Strategy waiting.
I move, we postpone this then.
Same subject, but a little different. Could you provide us next month with the annual op, complete annual operating costs of the of the van? That includes staff, fuel, maintenance and collection, so that when we can speak to this, we know what this van is costing us each year.
We can provide estimates. I know Sandy has done.
It would be an estimate.
Yeah.
You don't know what it was gonna cost.
Right. Uh, but she has been.
We we have, we have those numbers, yeah.
Sandy's been doing a lot of research and talking to the counties about what their operating costs are, so.
We have a guess for the first year maintenance. Um, second year maintenance would be higher, but we we know those numbers, yes.
I have already put that into our next year's budget, so I can bring that to you.
So John just moved that we postponed this.
That's my amendment to the motion.
Okay, so you are.
We have a motion to approve.
Uh huh.
I'm putting forth an amendment which has to be voted on to postpone.
So then what do we vote on right now?
On an amendment.
Okay, anyone want to second John's amendment that we postponed this budget amendment question until next month?
Well, lacking an amendment second, the amendment fails.
Okay, so then do we need a second to vote on this motion that we approved this fifty thousand dollar budget amendment?
I believe you had a second already. Dorothy seconded that motion already.
Okay, thank you, Dorothy. Okay. All in favor of approving this fifty thousand dollar budget amendment? Please say aye. Aye. All in favor or all opposed or abstained? No. Okay. The ayes have it, the motion passes. All right, I know assets, I'm sorry.
We hear from Sharon.
We didn't get Sharon.
Sharon, did you vote? I'm sorry, how do you vote, Sharon?
Yes, I voted aye.
You voted aye. Got it. Okay, all right. I know Asset Strategies is waiting. Thank you for your patience. Let's take five minutes and then we'll come back with Asset Strategies. We're the client. Give us five minutes.
Actually, uh, I believe we are now going to hear from um the folks at Asset Strategy. Um, I asked them to come to meet with you um rather than meet with them preliminarily. I just said, you know, let's talk with the board here. And they are going to just talk a little bit about our portfolio, and I believe they have some recommendations for change for you. Great.
Yes, good morning. This is John Meehan at Asset Strategy and um waiting for my colleague Al Morrison to uh to join. Oh, here he comes.
Welcome, John. Uh, we're really happy to have you today, and I I just want to note that we have a number of new folks on our board. Uh, and so if you can just help educate all of us and get us up to speed, uh, we'd really appreciate it.
Sure, yeah, um, let's see. Uh, Al, have you joined up?
Um, he keeps coming in and out, so I'll watch for him and.
Oh, okay. Okay. Great. Um, yeah, cuz he was uh, so he's the lead, but what I can do, at least in his absence, is give everybody a a quick um update on who Asset Strategy is. We're an investment consulting firm. We're located in Hunt Valley, Maryland. And we primarily serve institutions. So um, we're used to working with um pension plans, endowments and foundations, um, insurance companies and other institutions that have um funds that need to be invested and uh, you know, they have committees and boards that um need assistance with uh and utilize us to help them structure their investment program. And with the goal of trying to meet their needs. Um, we've been uh in operation here for over thirty years. And um, let's see, Al Morrison was one of the founding partners and um, let's see, he uh we, let's see, back um in the last uh eighteen months or so, we've um, we've Al and I have taken on uh the roles of, you know, lead contacts with the library's program. And I am the director of research here at Asset Strategy. And also do have a couple of consulting clients. So um, you know, we help do the manager research in terms of when we look at who the uh funds are going to be that are going to participate in the program, we're um doing the background research in terms of checking with the firms, looking at who the portfolio managers are, what their investment philosophy is and process, and how do they implement it to um make sure that there is a good chance that it'll be successful in uh executing their strategy. Let's see, had you uh, are there any questions that anybody had at this point on this? And one, one other question I have is um, how much time should we um plan on? and utilize us to help them structure their investment program and with the goal of trying to meet their needs. We've been in operation here for over thirty years. And let's see, Al Morrison was one of the founding partners. And let's see, he, we, let's see, back in the last eighteen months or so, we've, we've, Al and I have taken on the roles of, you know, lead contacts with the library's program. And I am the director of research here at Asset Strategy. And also do have a couple of consulting clients. So, you know, we help do the manager research in terms of when we look at who the funds are going to be that are going to participate in the program. We're doing the background research in terms of checking with the firms, looking at who the portfolio managers are, what their investment philosophy is and process and how do they implement it to make sure that there is a good chance that it'll be successful in executing their strategy. Let's see, had you, are there any questions that anybody had at this point on this? And one, one other question I have is, how much time should we plan on using in your meeting?
Could we aim for ten minutes perhaps?
Okay.
Alfred is with us now.
Oh, great. Al, I just finished giving the committee a brief update on who we are. And let's see, Al, you just need to unmute your mic. And you're, click your camera, that's in the bottom, usually in the bottom of the box, bottom left of your Zoom window. Where you can click on your camera and your, and your microphone to unmute it and turn it on. It says he's not allowed to unmute supposedly.
Okay, we're working on that on our end.
No, it's, it's not us. We, he's gone again. There's something on his end because we don't have anyone.
Okay, but let's try to move forward then.
Yeah, then let's do that. Let's see, do you, I trust that you all have the performance report that we had sent in. And so what we wanted to touch on today primarily is looking at the, let's see, how to.
I sent that out via email.
Performance has been. And with that, let's take a look. Maybe the first thing I can direct your attention to is taking a look at page ten in the report. Because what that does is looks at how the fund looks with regards to its asset allocation compliance. And with that, you know, we look, you can see these bars. This is how each of your asset classes are allocated versus their, versus their target. And in the table below, right in the center, is the target allocation of each of those asset classes. And we can see that, you know, we look at international equity and emerging market equity. Those are two asset classes that are in essence being taken care of by one fund in the portfolio. And one of the things that Al and I talked about was simplifying the asset allocation targets in the portfolio so that we would have just an international equity that would eliminate these, what appears to be over and unders in the international and emerging equity, because both of those classes are international. And also, we look at domestic fixed income. Combining both the domestic fixed income and high yield into one asset class, just fixed income that would clear those classes. Okay, great. Good. Yeah, and so, and over on the right, we, you know, say, is it within range? Yes or no? And, you know, the main reason that the one class isn't within range is, you know, because we're in essence, like I said, we wanted to simplify the number of classes and make international equity more of a just one class, combine it with emerging equity and do a couple of other simplifications of those asset classes. So if we go to page eleven, we can take a look and see that, you know, this is where the performance, which is shown below the charts here in the top row, you can see on the far left, total fund and its target. And it looks at what the returns are in that table, at the first row in that table for various periods. So for three months, one year, all the way up to seven years and since the inception date, which was in 2013. And you can see that compared to the benchmark, the target, we can see that, you know, in, in these different periods and since inception, you're slightly below what the target return was and the target is a number of different market benchmarks.
Yeah, it does seem like we're underperforming on all of these metrics. Should, should we be doing better?
Well, that goes back to the structure of the asset allocation, we think, that the, that in terms of the, in terms of some of the implementations, that there's opportunities for some improvement. What, actuarially though, I believe the target, the actual, the actuarial investment assumption is six percent over time, over long periods of time. So, you know, there is slight underperformance to the actuarial assumption of six percent. And there's a little more under, slight underperformance relative to the target of the benchmarks, which was six point one one. So what we want.
I'm sorry, can I ask what you mean by actuarial assumption? Sounds like somebody's about to kick the bucket.
Oh, well, so what's done, what's done for this plan, since it's a, in essence, it's a benefit plan for the retired employees, is that the plan utilizes an actuary that helps, that looks at pension plans and benefit plans and other sorts of, of institutions like them to then figure out, okay, you have a projected future liability of X. And over the next ten years or so, and so in order to get to a, in order to achieve your target of meeting your liability along with the contributions that you might be making and the returns on the asset, we're hoping that we're projecting, the actuaries assuming that the plan can get a six percent return on its investment program in order to meet, help meet the obligations in the future.
And that's net of costs.
Right, that's correct.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so, let's see.
Can I, may I interrupt you for a second?
Absolutely.
Can we move to page? It's two, two or three back. Sixteen, page sixteen.
Sixteen, sure.
So we have a vertical line and a horizontal line. And I see the target is a triangle. And where our, our whole fund, all of them together, is the square.
Correct.
So looking at the three years, which is the left box, we find all these little bitty dots are the other people in our so-called category, which is less than the fifty million dollars defined benefit. And based on where our little black square is, we are to the right of the vertical. So I think that means we're taking more risk. And we are below the horizontal, which means we're getting less reward. So my question, given all the dots that are in the upper left-hand corner, the northwest corner there, what are we doing wrong that we don't have our, our program up there where all these other people, what are they doing that we're not?
Yeah, yeah. Well, Al has joined me in my office here while he's not on camera. Is there anything that you wanted to address to that?
I certainly will. And sorry, I couldn't connect my desktop or my phone, so it's probably something on this end. But certainly when it comes to looking at performance in an attribution sense, and John already alluded to one component being the asset allocation targets, which we'll discuss. And then implementation comes down to the performance of the underlying approved asset classes and that leads to the individual money managers. John, you want to? Let me back up if you don't mind, because this is, I think, a key issue and just talk about.
I did, I did speak about the idea of the asset allocation and the, you know, how we want to simplify. But, you know, one of the other things we had is that, you know, we're looking at, there have been a number of index strategies that have been put in. And, you know, the idea is to, you know, look at taking some of those indexes and implementing some active management in those asset classes as well. For example, the REIT asset class was an index that was used and an index fund. And that index fund, you know, hasn't performed well in its peer group. And in essence, that index fund is, is almost like a, is, is performs like a small cap equity strategy. And so we're, that was one of the changes that we wanted to recommend was to change that US REIT ETF and put it in the small cap allocation, because REITs are in essence, small cap equities. And, you know, the thought would be to let the equity manager, the active equity manager, make the, you know, the decision about how much RE, how much real estate you want to put in, in their strategy. Is it a good time that you do real estate? Which is the best ones to do it? The test.
Test.
Yeah. But Al, you were going to say?
Let me, you know, John's on one of the key topics. Just to put it in perspective, looking at how have REITs performed over time against the Russell two thousand, which is the small cap index. So over the last five years, the REIT index is up one point two percent. The Russell two thousand is up four percent. And if we go off for the last ten years, take a longer cycle, it's five percent positive for the REITs and seven percent for small cap. It's a part of the logic of folding the REITs and let, as John alluded to, let the small cap managers decide how much exposure they're comfortable with.
And apologize for, if you hear the background noise, but there is a fire drill, or a fire alarm test that the fire department is here doing, so hopefully it's not too distracting.
So far, we're not hearing it. Thank you, though.
Oh, good.
John, can we go back to the big picture for a moment?
Yeah, sure.
I know you are a fee-based organization and I believe our fees are one point two five percent against the value of the assets. Is that correct?
I can check on that and confirm that for you.
But let's, let's pretend that's the right number, because that may have been negotiated differently. But my question is, at what point is the snapshot taken for the value? Is it in arrears or in advance? And is it paid monthly, quarterly or what?
Well, it's all, it's in arrears and it's paid quarterly.
Paid quarterly. So on March thirty first snapshot? And then application of one-fourth of the annual fee?
Correct, whatever, whatever that fee is.
Now, that's you guys. How, but you're not holding the actual assets. They're at Schwab, correct?
Correct, yes.
How is Schwab getting paid?
An extremely small, you know, sort of maybe a one or even a one percent basis, one basis point, you know, charge.
Does that come, are they paid by you?
No, they're paid by the plan.
They're paid by the plan. And do you know at what point they take the snapshot and receive compensation?
That I'll have to look into.
Okay, I'm just trying to give the newbies a big picture here.
Yeah, sure.
Or we drill too far down into performance.
No, yeah, I think that's a great point, because the idea is, is that you want your service providers to be, you know, conflict free. And, you know, and sort of have skin in the game, so to speak, alongside you. So, you know, so the fee is, you know, going to be based on basis point computation of the, of the market value and as of certain date and, and it would be, here we go. And so and for our fee, it's fifteen basis points. So that's zero point one five percent of your assets, not one and a quarter percent, that we'd love to get that. But as an investment consultant, you know, fifteen basis points, zero point one five percent is, you know, what our fee is each quarter.
Okay, I saw that number in an older document regarding to our relationship with you, so that's incorrect.
Oh, no, 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 no worries.
All right, next question. Your reports to us do a really interesting job of front-loading the big picture of what's going on in different asset classes, et cetera, et cetera. But as I understand it from our previous rep, having all that information comes from a third party and you can't put our report together until you have it to put in the front of everything that we see here, which really means that by the time we're looking at December thirty first numbers, our report is received here in Leonardtown about the first or second week in March. And so the numbers are really kind of irrelevant. Can you, is there any way to expedite delivery of the data?
Yeah, actually, well, actually, in a lot of cases, it's, most of our clients have meetings set usually, you know, in the second month of the quarter, because the performance reports, we can actually get them, you know, in the first week of February, if, you know, that would be helpful for you.
Without peer universes?
Yeah, with, with peer universes. I mean, we can have the peer universes done, certainly by, you know, the, the peer universes are released, you know, about the third week of, of, say, in this case, would have been January, very early, so there's not a lot in there. Usually, those peers are relatively fully populated by, you know, the end of January, let's say. So, and usually the way, the way the performance reporting team works on it is they look at the clients who have meetings, because, you know, we got to get the material out then, so. You know, but if your group is, you know, available to, you know, look at the reports earlier, whether you have a meeting or not, we can certainly work on a timing schedule for you.
And speaking of peer groups, is there any smaller universe than less than fifty million? We've got a mill and a quarter.
I know.
We're running with the big dogs here in terms of comparison.
Yeah, and we were looking at that and. Yeah, and we were looking at that, and um, you know, I think the thing is, is that uh. Uh, what we're gonna try and do is work with our provider on these, on these universes and see if we can find. Um, you know, small, not only smaller numbers, but plans that are like yours, because. You're a um, health benefits um, provider. Um, and, and so the, uh, you know, you're in there with the defined benefit pension plan. Peer group, which is similar, you know, it rhymes, but it's not. Um, full, you know, close to things, so we're gonna see what we can do about finding, um, you know, health and welfare. Or something such as that as a peer group that we might be able to, um, you know. Look at you, we, we did look at your investments as well, and it's, you know. Relatively similar in terms of the um, liquid assets. Some of these pension plans um, do have investments in. You know, private equity and private real estate as well. Um, so they're not exactly like. Uh, allocated like your plan would be, or is, so. Yes, we're gonna see what we can do about, um, you know. Uh, focusing that peer group, uh, something that's a little bit closer to uh, what your. Uh, what your strategy is. Um, but, you know, the other thing, though, is that, you know, again, because you have the. Uh, the actuary's return assumptions at six percent, the important thing is, are you allocated? Um, in a way that can, you know, help you achieve that, you know, six percent. Return over a long, long period of time.
All right, thank you. Sharon, do you have a question or comment? Nope, okay. All right, um, John, we want to be mindful of the time.
Yes.
Some key points that I'm hearing is that you're gonna recommend a new allocation for us. Uh, to get some better returns. It would be great if we could get those quarterly reports earlier in the second month, and perhaps think about some ongoing meetings or conversations. To make sure that we're all in the loop. And then you're, you're also gonna look for a peer group of smaller institutions that are, you know, more like ours in terms of the purpose of the fund. And all of that sounds really helpful.
Great. I'm glad we could, glad we could get to meet with you, um, you know, and uh, we'll look forward to continued communication and, and moving forward, so. Um, thanks for letting us join and uh, hope your meeting goes well.
Uh, and, um, you can, you can send things to me, Michael, uh, as you typically do, I, I can show those out to the board. And, and then arrange to, to meet, uh, to have discussions as needed.
Yes, that's what we'll do. We'll, we'll certainly be in touch with you over the next uh. Forty-five days or so, as we get ready for the next quarter.
Thank you so much. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, happy to help. Nice call, bye-bye now.
Bye-bye. So at this point, you are considering what, if anything, you wish to put into um, the OPEB.
Are we fiduciaries on that?
Are we fiduciaries on the OPEB?
Yeah.
I do not know, off the top of my head. My understanding is that it's a library fund and that you are not. Um, but typically, um, we have uh, given you the ability to allocate. Based on your fiscal oversight of the library as a whole.
Aha. Well, before we get into, let me briefly read some from the Department of Labor here. Meeting your fiduciary responsibilities. And I think we ought to act like fiduciaries, even if we technically are not. A number of decisions are not fiduciary actions, but rather are business decisions. Made by the employer, for example. The decision to establish a plan to determine the benefit package to include certain features in a plan. To amend a plan and to terminate a plan are business decisions, not governed by ERISA. When making these decisions, an employer is acting on behalf of its business, not the plan, and therefore is not a fiduciary. However, when an employer or someone hired by the employer takes steps to implement these decisions. That person is acting on behalf of a plan, and in carrying out these actions, may be a fiduciary. Okay, so a higher level of responsibility on our shoulders. Seems to come out of this category. That said, and getting back to what uh, we learned at the commissioner's meeting, and then from Commissioner Hewitt. Being here. We are in effect given a block grant. Figure out what you want to do with it, okay? And looking at the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. I have totaled all the underfunding to the OPEB. We have underfunded this to the tune of a hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. From twenty fifteen all the way through twenty twenty-two. The last number I saw as a uh, percentage of. Funding our future liability, and this gets back to the actuary. We're at about thirty-nine percent. And I gotta tell you, we are not gonna grow our way to a higher number. With our current contribution level and our current performance level. And I think we need to take that into account. When we start deciding. How we want to allocate not only what we have. But how we are going to contribute more effectively.
Have you included the amounts that we have funded out of pocket pay-go?
Yeah, but that's not in the OPEB account.
But we, we have used the funding that is ostensibly there for. Funding this for pay-go expenses.
Well, then why is Bolton even bothering to give us these future projections of what we need to be doing?
Well, um, the idea is ultimately to get there, um, but I uh. Given our current fiscal situation, that's going to be very difficult to do, as you pointed out. But I don't know where you got that figure. Um, when we have to pay-go. But we still have to pay-go certain amounts, and in some cases, we pay more than. What the budget officially allocates for the OPEB, and we've asked for increases from the county and we've never received them.
Yeah, but you're running on two different sets of books here. One is, one is the budget every year. And this is a responsibility we're undertaking on behalf of future obligations. And let me pick a year here. In twenty eighteen. The actuarially determined contribution was a hundred and fifteen thousand. We did pretty good that year, we put in ninety-two. Well, that's not too bad. Uh, in seventeen, ninety-nine was the target number actuarially, we put in sixty-six. In fifteen, the actuarial number was a hundred and twelve thousand, we put in ninety-one. You can total up all the contribution deficiencies or excess. And that's where I get that we are underwater by a hundred and thirty-six thousand and change. On keeping up our obligations. For funding this account. Now that said, we heard earlier today. That. After we subtract all the known things. We have a. Side budget, side pot of money. Of somewhere between two hundred and seventy-six and two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Okay? That's, that's the pot, and we know that some of that has got to be used. To maybe make the budget work. In the year we're coming up to, because we don't know what the commissioners are gonna give us. Okay? So, when we're thinking about what we want to put in, and we have somewhere between low end, two seventy-six. High end and two eighty-eight. I think we need to take a huge chunk of that and get current with our obligations to the OPEB account.
I disagree with that and don't think that it's good. I don't think it's good. No, no, no. Slush fund, we, we do have to have some rainy day fund, some emergency fund there. It's recommended that we've got two months' worth of expenses on hand as a general accounting practice.
All right, and that would.
And I, I resent it being called a slush fund.
But you're the one that brought that name up.
No, rainy day fund is not a slush fund.
I've heard it expressed both ways.
Well, I, I've not called it a slush fund, and I don't think that's an appropriate thing to call it. In any case, it's just there for whatever. In fact. It's been built up over the years because we haven't really been dipping into it to speak of. This is kind of the first year we've really had to do that.
But that gets back to what the commissioners were telling us. You guys get X number of dollars, this is what we think we can do for you, figure it out. And we have figured it out that we are basically gonna underfund the OPEB account. Over. What, almost ten years? No, eight years.
Well, the, you know, the fund has grown, not recently admittedly, but um. I, I'm just not convinced that um, taking a huge chunk of that when we don't know. We might have emergency expenses is our best idea. Is it appropriate for us to think about this OPEB question before we know? The money we're getting for next year's budget?
I think the answer is no, we need to know that.
No, um, you typically, we do have made this decision last November. When we saw what money, as it were, we had in excess of any. And we haven't made that decision since then, but if you want to wait till next, till tomorrow, when we have some idea of what next year's budget might be. Then I have no problem with that whatsoever. I mean, it's, you know, I frankly don't think it's a great time to be putting money into the stock exchange right now anyway.
That has nothing to do with uh, uh, an unlimited time horizon.
It won't, it won't hurt us to wait a month.
The story of the month is irrational panic with bank depositors. We're investing in stocks and bonds.
Let, let's say Judith jump in here.
Kind of better investment strategy and a better um. Outcome of our investments. Elevate some of this problem. And we're talking about six percent, you know, if we had um. Not that being more aggressive. But maybe a better strategy or a better market next year, you hit eight or ten percent. Does that help? The negative, reduce that negative?
It does help. But if you sit down, and I've done this on. Two, three other boards that I'm on. And you hear the actuary talk about where do they come up with their six percent or whatever it is. There's about eight different things they supposedly look at. One of which is healthcare. Okay, now think about it, this is for people in retirement. Do we really think that healthcare costs today? Are gonna be better? Than healthcare costs ten, fifteen, twenty years from now? History says they're not. But that is a component of about eight different things they look at. To come up with basically what is a best guess. If you can get six percent, or if you can get seven percent, and if you can fund. According to what we have laid out as our actuarial. Recommendation to make everything work. There's a lot of moving parts here. We think you'll be all right. But at thirty-nine percent. And severe underfunding. This, this turkey is not gonna fly.
I, I have a question, I'm sorry. Go ahead, man.
I was just gonna, I think, um, and Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think. That any of the libraries across the state are fully funded in their OPEB. In fact, I think they're all. I think we've put more in our OPEB than many other libraries, and you should look at that data.
And, and I, I would agree that they are probably not, because that's not the point I'm trying to make. Point I'm trying to make is we have an obligation to future retirees.
We, we totally do. As somebody that plans to retire from here, I fully agree, but we can't. We also have. A commitment to the current staff and uh, the current.
And that's the budget.
And, and this is why typically we make the decision based upon. What any overage was that we had, and I don't care in the future if we say, all right. November, we get our. Um, audit back and we say, you know, here's, here's what the, the budget is, if you put all that into it, but I don't think you should look at. Our rainy day fund where we're supposed to have two months' worth of expenses and say, let's, let's empty it out into OPEB, especially right now.
Empty it out, what are, what are two months worth? What does that total?
Um, we have payroll.
I can tell you that payroll alone is two million dollars, sorry. Um, hold on, I gotta think that through. Two hundred thousand dollars uh, a month, at least.
Yeah, so basically, right now, we've got, if, if we had the four, four eighty-eight, we've pretty much got two months right now.
Um, that's one month of payroll.
Yeah, okay, one month of payroll, so, you know, we're, we're nowhere near, but. That's the, you know, that's, that's just kind of a recommended number, it's not an absolute that we have to have. Okay, so I, I think it would be helpful, I think we should kind of defer this decision to next month after we see. The new budget numbers. I don't, do we need a motion to do that? No, no, you, you, you don't have to do that, we can, you can just say, because you haven't had a motion about it yet, just say we can. You know, all, all the rest, frankly, um. Well, I, I also, can I ask, next month, can we please have a firm number of what that two-month? You know, emergency fund would look like with payroll and everything else, so let's see what our target would be there. Um, and I also have a question, I think for you, Belinda, about the numbers that John just rattled off in terms of what the library contributed. They were different than the numbers that are provided here.
Yeah, um, I'm don't, not sure what John looks at. I did not go through the Schwab account. What I went through was my MLGIP account, which is what we fund the Schwab with. I don't have a history past the last two years, so. This is what I saw move from our MLGIP account into the Schwab account. If we funded it from somewhere else, then there would be other.
The, these were, these were the amounts that we paid into extra, as it were. Um, these are the extra. Yeah, the, these are, these are the amounts that you said, all right, let's put this in. And then initial four hundred and sixty-five was what the county gave us the one year to start the fund. Okay, I just want to make sure we're talking apples and apples, as we're doing this, okay, yep, all right. Good talk, everybody. Let's keep moving forward. Uh, it is, it is noon, um, I don't know people's time, I'm, 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 I'm here as long as you want. Let's make that clear. I didn't know what people's time constraints are for the board. Sharon's gotta go, it looks like.
I can stay a little longer, I'm avoiding a meeting at work by doing so, and but.
I, I.
Talk about moving this to a Friday, that would be great.
I, I can, um, I, I can very quickly close out, although the one thing that I think. Has been on the agenda since January and hasn't been determined is what future meeting dates would be. Yes, and so, um, we had gotten some folks input and feedback on what possible days and times have worked for them. I think one, one possibility that seemed to be broadly acceptable would be Friday mornings instead of Monday mornings. Um, Friday mornings at ten AM or nine AM. Is that something that could be feasible for this group as we move forward? Okay.
But I, I mean, I crunch, I question the length, this is my third meeting, and every single meeting we run far short of getting our agenda finished. Um, so my thought was a different day, different time, go into the evening, start at five PM, and we go as long as we need to, do it on Saturday. But we, we're never getting to, through our agenda, so two hours isn't working for us.
I, I will say on that note, Judith, that it's Belinda over here. Um, normally, that's not the case, but we have had a lot of budget info come up in these past. Three months, um, that we don't always have to hit like this.
Yeah, we, we've often been done in an hour, an hour and a half, um, in the past, so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Things off, that way we're not constrained by the clocks and the number, we've got to stop, if we had a time that.
Well, well, by having it here in the libraries, you are also no longer dependent on county time when they need their, needing their meeting room. So, w- we can, if you move it to a Friday, uh, could we say nine-thirty, just so we've got time to set it up? Um, and then if you run it till one as necessary, that's no, no problem for folks. You know, perhaps we could, if we start a Friday at nine-thirty and we run it. Until noon, in theory, anyway, that gives us another half hour if we need it. Um, perhaps, can we try that? Fridays at nine-thirty AM? All right, we, we will change the meeting schedule and I will notify the county, because we do have to notify them of when the meetings are. And um, um. Do we need a motion? Do we need to vote on this?
Do you still want it to be the second Friday of the month? I mean, are you keeping that part of it the same?
Well, I think, I, to me, the schedule's kind of all.
Or the third.
We start January the night, and by the end of the year, we're down to the twentieth of the month, so November twentieth is Thanksgiving week. If we not have a meeting that week. December eighteenth is really close to Christmas.
Well, the, the reason why so many changes is on Mondays, they're often preempted by holidays, and that was the case both in January and February, so. Now we've got a longer time since that February meeting. Um, if you make it a Friday. I, other than Thanksgiving, I don't think you're gonna run into any conflicts, although, you know, possibly. I, other than Thanksgiving, I don't think you're gonna run into any conflicts, although, you know, possibly the um December meeting would have an issue with with the Christmas holidays.
So the second Friday
Second Friday should be fine. Yeah, I don't, I don't think you're gonna run into any issues there, possibly veterans day.
I thought we did the third Monday of the month.
We do, but you want to move it up. Judith's pointing out that it's close to Christmas and Thanksgiving.
Second Friday. All right, so so we are ready to entertain a motion to move our meetings to the second Friday of the month at nine thirty AM.
Commencing.
Commencing in April.
Unless preempted by a holiday.
Unless preempted by a holiday, of course.
And and then you can make other arrangements as we typically have.
All right, so can I get a motion to begin with?
You just did.
I said that we can entertain a motion.
You're right, you can't. I I move that we amend our meeting schedule to the second Friday of each month, beginning next month, April, beginning at nine thirty.
Second, all right, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed or abstained? All right, motion passed.
We will come up with a new meeting schedule for you then. Um, just to close things out, um I have hip hip parades for Rosa Catherine, uh Rosa Nakamoto, Catherine DiCristofaro and Jill Hutchinson, who have developed the mobile library collection. Thank you to them. And to Jill, Karen Kimberley especially, and Sarah Stevenson. We have a grant from Patuxent um partnership for three thousand five hundred dollars to fund a STEM program. And um I am expecting a press release to come out on that. They came here and and we had some nice photos taken, so a Patuxent partnership is funding a a STEM activity here at the Lexington Park.
The citizen science programs that you may have seen in our newsletter. Um, they have kits that go along with them, so uh the the people in the programs can check out the kit that goes along with it.
So tomorrow is our library budget hearing at one thirty in the Chesapeake building. Um uh I uh it's not mandatory for the board to attend. I'll certainly let you know what is going on. You may also, if it's more convenient, watch it on the county's YouTube channel. Um, on April twenty fifth, we have two events. At nine o'clock in the morning, um in the Chesapeake building, again, in the commissioner's room, is library week proclamation. And we'll have a proclamation from the commissioners. Um, interestingly enough, that evening at six thirty at Choptekon High School is the public budget hearing. And we'll know better tomorrow um what our reaction at the public um budget hearing is going to be. Um, we're we're hoping that the commissioners give us a um healthy figure. And we then instantly turn all the letters that have written, and I've got three sitting in my inbox that have recently come in just over the weekend that I'll need to add to that list. If you haven't looked at that list of the um the letters recently do so because several more have been added. Um if we um get a a nice, healthy figure, then all those people will be asked, please just way to thank you for funding the library well, and we'll instantly flip over to gratitude mode. If we are given a figure that we really will have struggling to make work with any kind of raise for staff at all, then we are going to do a general call for people to come out to the public budget hearing. The schools are already doing that. We hope to be, as Laura says, the second loudest voice in the room. Um, so we're we're hopeful, um frankly, um with one point five million that has not been allocated, the Health Department, which is asking for five million already to be considered, us to be considered, and the nonprofits, which are typically funded at one million a year, um it's gonna be tight. So we'll find out tomorrow better about what number they have initially have planned for the library. There is a budget appeal. We have to have a budget appeal in by May second after the public hearing. Um, but we can already begin drafting that already. Um, on June twenty seventh is the mobile library ribbon cutting. If it's not ready, I'm just gonna put up a Big Ten and write mobile library on the side. It's gonna be ready. Um, uh Delegate Crosby is planning on speaking. Um, Commissioner Guy, the Commissioner President, will be saying a few words. Um, uh, we will have library staff presenting if any of you would like to uh say a few words to that event. Um, we will be having a snow cone truck, if nothing else. Um, and the county is working with us to try to make that a very nice, uh very nice day in front of the Leonardtown Library. Um, so that's just to close it out quickly. Um, I know we've got other budget items. We will get you that number that you just requested and bring back these other items uh next month.
Michael, do you know, have any sense of the order tomorrow at one thirty? Are we gonna be near the top of that session? Are we gonna be in the middle or the end? Any sense?
We are close to the end. Um, so they will be doing the Health Department before us typically. Um, we come before the nonprofits. A a lot of that meeting is going to be spent. Um, basically, they need to come away from that meeting with a balanced budget as uh written currently proposed to take to the public hearing. So I would, I would think we're probably going to be on the docket by two. But if you can't make it, as I say, we'll certainly be letting you know what's going on, and they sometimes ask me to come up, and if they do, you're welcome to join me if you're there. They sometimes don't, they sometimes, I say, here's what the library gets. Um, and they'd already, you know, decided that already, so we will, we will see what they have to say tomorrow.
Thank you, Michael. Before we wrap up, uh any new business or items trustees want to throw out for our next meeting? Okay, all right. Um, I want to thank everybody for their commitment, dedication to the library and their impassioned opinions. It takes a village to move this thing forward. I really appreciate everyone's thoughtful consideration. Can we get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Move, we adjourn.
Second, anybody? Thank you, Judith. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed or abstained? Okay, have a great week, everybody. Thank you.
Now that we are adjourned, um, and I